It's more about making the world a better place. And so whether I'm sitting in the chair as a Spark City Council member or I'm working with the Girl Scouts to help the young women advance their next community service project to make sure that we have the infrastructure that allows them to do that, it really is all about strengthening our community. And so I found that there were lots of places where those two roles blended nicely for me to just be out in the community and working on issues. And that might be as the CEO of the Girl Scouts or in my current role, or that might be as a city council member. And then there were other places where, you know, it really was just a manner of making sure that the top priorities got the attention. And so I feel like I did a good job of keeping that balance and making sure that, you know, the people, the voters who put me here got the responsiveness that they deserved from staff, they got my time and attention, and we got some things done.
What's your perspective on this notion of regional cooperation relationships between Sparks, Reno, Washoe County, and elsewhere?
You know, I think we've made some great progress in some areas, and I think there's still some work to do in others. And, you know, I think anytime you get one of those really tough, tough issues where not everybody gets what they were looking for out of the final decisions, sometimes that can be a setback. But I have a lot of faith in the people who step up to do these jobs, and I think that it's going to be fine.
Well, Councilwoman Ratty, thank you for your help and your service, and it's been a pleasure working alongside with you. You've done a remarkable job, you really have, and we're going to miss you, and we're very proud that we've had Julia Ratty, one of the few women, I want to add, that has had the privilege to serve on the Sparks City Council. So thank you for all that you've done.
Thanks, Joe. I've really, really enjoyed my time as a city council member. It's something I'll cherish for the rest of my life.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes this installment of Spotlight on Sparks. Make sure you follow us on all our social media channels. From all of us at the City of Sparks, thanks for watching.
Even if no one in your home smokes, secondhand smoke can be closer than you think. Secondhand smoke from a neighbor's apartment can enter your home through air vents, through light fixtures, and even through cracks in the walls and the floors. Secondhand smoke is toxic, especially to children. Protect your family.
It's another fantastic day right here in the City of Sparks, Nevada. We have a great program lined up for you on this installment of Spotlight on Sparks. Stay tuned. Every commercial and residential structure in this city must be safe for workers, customers, and residents. How does...
I want everyone to join us, so I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and we look forward to future engagement.
Thank you very much. Anyone further on public comment? If not, we'll move to approval of the agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're looking for approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes here. We must go through here. The first is July 6th, is that right?
Yes.
First is for July 6th, and I think we've made some changes. Did everybody get that today on that? Were able to read that? So I will entertain a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the draft minutes of July 6th with the changes.
Motion for approval in a second.
A second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Can we look for the minutes of the draft meeting, draft minutes for the study session on August 1st?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve.
Commissioner Few in seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then we have finally here for August 3rd. I see that there are some suggested proposals to be changed on this. Commissioner Scott, would you like to...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for the record, I have some mock-up of proposed changes to these minutes. They're just, their main intent is just to kind of clarify some of the comments that I had made with respect to pages eight and nine. That was the Vista's rezoned item. But just for the record, page eight, sixth paragraph, the proposed mock-up reflects my comments with respect to the proposed zoning and its relationship with the comprehensive land use for that property. And on page nine, seventh paragraph for the commission, for the commission's consideration is a mock-up, kind of along the same lines. But I wanted to also put in my comments that with the specific findings and some of the comprehensive plan goals that I thought the project met. Be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Would you be happy if we went ahead and approved this and recognized it and let the secretary go ahead and make those changes instead of bringing it back?
That would be, that would be great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll recognize those changes, and can you make the changes?
Sure, if you're ready to, I'll make a motion that we approve the August 3rd Planning Commission meeting minutes with the changes to page eight and nine as proposed in my mock-up tonight.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Announcement of committee, committee reports, please.
Chairman Peterson, I don't have any announcements, nor do I have any committee reports for you.
Any information on...
With regard to informational items, I did want to follow up and note that I think Ms. Smith has provided the Planning Commission with some initial information about the Nevada chapter of the American Planning Association holding their annual conference in Carson City this year from Monday, October 2nd through Wednesday, October 4th. Certainly, if any of the members of the Planning Commission are interested in attending, you know, some or all of that conference, please let Mary Lee know, and we can get you registered to attend.
Over is that announcement again on the computer so we can all... Oh, never mind. I didn't, did I? How come I didn't get one of these?
It should be at your place.
You can have mine. Chairman Peterson.
You didn't want me to call. Thank you. Mondo, you have anything else?
I do not, Chairman.
We'll move on to the public hearing items. Address, BC 1700, the 33, consideration of possible action for major deviation of a floor area ratio for commercial zoning at 1412 and 1416 Pullman Drive, Sparks.
Chairman Peterson, members of the Planning Commission, Ian Crittenden, Senior Planner. The item we have before you tonight is a major deviation request by JNC Champagne Investments LLC to deviate the floor area ratio, or FAR, on a property that's with a MUD/MUC designation. As a note, I managed to not get the conditions or proposed conditions of approval into the staff report. So at this time, I'll read those into the record and ask if they'd be added to the record.
Actually, Mr. Crittenden, why don't you go through your presentation first and read them at the end as part of your recommendation?
Okay. Thank you. As a note as well, there are six, whereas the proposed motion or suggested motion that staff presented only had one through five, so. So this site is located here southwest of the intersection of Prater Way and Sparks Boulevard. These two highlighted parcels are the subject site. The floor area ratio, or FAR, in the MUD/MUC is typically .5 or 0.50, depending on how you want to look at that. Because the property is within 400 feet of a designated BRT or Bus Rapid Transit route, that floor area ratio is increased to 0.75. The higher, the required higher FAR is intended to increase residential and commercial density along the core transit routes. The request to reduce the FAR is to reduce it to the maximum allowed by the major deviation process. Major deviations per the zoning code allow deviations over 10% and less than 50%. So in this case, the request would be to reduce the floor area ratio from .75 to a value greater than .375. The site is part of an existing mixed-use center. This highlighted area shows essentially the boundaries of the Marina Marketplace, which these parcels that are the subject site are a part of. The Marina Marketplace was approved by a special use permit in 1999. The applicant actually owns a dental practice in this location here that was approved by Site Plan Review in 2006. It wasn't until 2009 that the mixed-use district was implemented and this area was brought into the mixed-use district. So the entirety of this shopping center was developed prior to, or what's been developed was developed prior to the approval and adoption of the mixed-use district. As I said, the applicant currently operates a dental practice at this location. They would like to, the reason for this application is that this major deviation request would facilitate their ability to construct some additional dental office space, as well as consolidate some other office spaces for their practice that they have kind of spread around town. The site consists of two parcels, the western parcel, which is .73 acres, and the eastern parcel, which is one acre. The applicant would like to, as proposed, to build a 15,958 square foot dental office and office building. In order to meet the floor area ratio, the parcels will have to be amended. The exact layout of the parcels, the buildings, and the parking is not yet determined and will be determined through the administrative review process. The initial assessments, though, between talking with the applicant is that there will be the need to create a future development parcel, and in order to make the FAR work, there will have to be some parking sharing between the two parcels. You know, whatever that orientation is worked out here, the likelihood is they won't be able to fit the required parking on that one, but will share between the two adjacent parcels, which is allowed in the mixed-use district. The floor area ratio, the deviation that's being requested, would still leave a floor area ratio that's higher than any of the adjacent parcels, specifically in the center, but also the adjacent parcels or in the vicinity. If we look at this chart here, these top two parcels are essentially the kind of proposed or thought about parcels of how this site would break down, but the remainder here are the adjacent parcels in the center and some of the other adjacent ones. This parcel here being the highest is the Northern Nevada Career College, and it is lower than what would be required even with the deviation for this site. This site will have to have a point greater than .375, so there'll be a higher floor ratio there. So there are five findings associated with major deviations. Finding MD1 requires that this request is in, is consistent with the zoning and land use. The major deviation process was added to provide a mechanism for the Planning Commission to be able to bridge the gaps between approved standards and the various factors that affect specific sites. The approval of this request would allow this site to develop in a density that is between what is in the vicinity and what is the current standard. Finding MD2 requires that the granting of this major deviation will not be materially detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare, or be injurious to property improvements in the vicinity. While the approval of this major deviation will dilute the total impact that the mixed-use district could have, it still is a higher floor area ratio than is provided by any of the adjacent properties in the Marina Marketplace and actually outside of it as well. Finding MD3 is that the granting of this request is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of property rights possessed by other property owners in the vicinity. As I mentioned earlier, these two sites are the last undeveloped portion of the Marina Marketplace Center that was approved in 99. And that entitlement happened in 99, and all of the development that's happened inside of that center has happened previous to the mixed-use district standards. So none of the rest of that center was built to the same density standard that this site is being required to meet. An approval of this request would allow the development of this site and would be at a density, again, between what's existing and what's currently required. And then MD4 requires that approval of this request does not constitute a special privilege. All of the properties in the mixed-use district have access to the major deviation process, and this site will continue to be subject to all of the other design and development standards of the mixed-use district. Finally, finding MD5 requires this item be noticed. Public notice was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on July 20th, and notices were mailed out to all property owners within 750 feet on July 19th. As mentioned, staff believes, or staff believes these findings can be made and recommends approval of this item subject to the six recommended conditions, which I can read into the record now. But I wonder if I misplaced that. Condition one, approval. This request is approved for a deviation of less than 50% of the floor area ratio requirement of .75 applicable to this location. The floor area ratio for this project shall be greater than .375. Two, expiration date. The major deviation shall expire within two years of the date of Planning Commission approval unless construction has begun and is being diligently pursued. A one-year extension may be granted by the Planning Commission if applied for prior to the expiration of the major deviation. Condition three, MUD development standards. This major deviation reduces the required floor area ratio, or FAR, on this site from .75 to greater than 3.75, or .375. All other development standards related to the mixed-use district shall remain in force and shall be met in order for an administrative review to be approved and a building permit to be issued. Finding, or condition four, administrative review. The review and approval of administrative review shall be required prior to the issuance of any building permits. Condition five, parcel mapping. Parcel mapping, whether by boundary line adjustment or via some other process, shall be reviewed and approved prior to the issuance of any building permit. The parcel mapping must result in a parcel that allows for an FAR greater than 0.375 and shall not create any parcels on which the principal use is parking without an approved conditional use permit for said use. And condition six is parking. The applicant shall provide a reciprocal parking and access agreement with the owners of adjacent properties as necessary to provide sufficient off-street parking to satisfy the requirements of SMC 20.04, .009, parking and loading as part of the reciprocal parking parcel mapping, or recorded parcel mapping. Sorry for my stumble there. Clerk, can that be added to the record for the next meeting? Thank you. That is the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions from the commissioners?
Questions, if I may, Mr. Chairman. First question I'd like to get, mostly for the record. In July, you'd sent out to the neighborhood the noticing that was requesting a 0.54 floor area ratio deviation. And so tonight, as I understand it, it's 0.375. Why the difference?
The difference is related to a plan that was presented initially that I had thought we could look at it one way and then after more review, determined that the way we were looking at it was not accurate. And so with, through much discussion with the applicant, we decided to change it a little bit in order to provide an opportunity to provide the parking and the building on the same parcel. The original submittal did not have them on the same parcel, and we can't approve that without a conditional use permit. As I mentioned a little bit in the, in the conditions of approval, is parking is not a permitted use on, as a standalone use in the mixed-use district.
My second question is, I was wondering if you could maybe provide some background to the commission and the public on how a floor area ratio within a building footprint, how that can promote transit use? And a follow-up to that is, since these standards have gone into place within the TOD and our mixed-use districts, have we had any projects that have met the .075 standard or the 18 dwelling units per acre standard?
Sure. I'll start there with the question of other projects. We have not, to my knowledge, had a strictly commercial project that has come in and met the .75 floor area ratio. But we have had mixed projects. We've had some projects that were a mix of commercial and residential that would meet that standard, and we've had straight residential projects that have met the floor, not the floor area ratio at that point, but the minimum dwelling unit per acre counts that are in the FAR, or in the mixed-use district. Sorry. And then to the first question, which I've now forgotten, sorry.
It was kind of the concept of floor area ratios and how those promote transit use.
Sure. So the, the transit use is really dependent on a population density, but also on availability of commercial uses that it makes sense for a person to get to without the use of a car is why those transit corridors often push for higher densities, because in order for them to get the ridership they need and for many other reasons, they need the higher density of commercial uses, they need the higher density of residential in order to work that way. And so when we, along these corridors, when we request or require a higher density of both housing and commercial, it gives those opportunities a place where they can happen. As we know, you know, typical suburban development, it makes it very hard for walking and transit to become useful. There needs to be a density of activity and of population in order for transit to have a success as a way to move people, you know, successfully.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Chairman Peterson, if I may add one comment to those of Mr. Crittenden and Commissioner Carey's question. The other thing I would note is that the intent with the mixed-use district is not strictly to promote transit, and that is in part why the City of Sparks actually changed how we refer to that district from transit-oriented development district to a mixed-use district. The intent was to mix, to promote density and intensity of uses in part to facilitate a mixed-use environment and make it more pedestrian-oriented over time. So it's not strictly about the transit, it's about a mix of uses, and it's about that pedestrian environment as well. So hence, you know, the policy shift, if you will, that occurred when we re-characterized, if you will, the transit-oriented development district to mixed-use district.
And any response from your notices from the neighborhood?
I have had no responses.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Ian. Is the applicant here?
We'd like to thank staff for their presentation. That kind of covered it in a nutshell. We're here to answer any specific questions you may have. We agree with staff's recommendation for approval and the conditions as read into the record, and we make ourselves available. Thank you.
Commissioners, got any questions? Thank you. This being a public hearing, being a little bit of a public hearing, anyone have any comments on this items? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners for discussion and possible motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a neighbor, figured I'd jump in with the discussion, if I may, here. Couple of points I'd like to make. I did receive a notice in July for this, for this project, and I think, you know, really what did it for me was looking at Exhibit 3, which kind of describes the floor area ratios within this area. They're pretty low. I think the average was .188. So to me, I think the regional plan and our mixed-use standard and policy of having a .75 floor area ratio and 18 dwelling units per acre is not compatible with this area. I don't think, I think it's out of character with what the area is and where it will be for a long time. Another issue I'd like to bring up for the commission is, is that I really think that when you have a floor area ratio of 75% and 18 dwelling units per acre, it should be served by Bus Rapid Transit. I would call attention to my colleagues on this commission to the 4th Street Prater Way corridor study that the RTC did in 2012. That only has BRT going to Centennial Station in 15th Street. It doesn't go this far out. I wish it did. As a neighbor, I ride Route 25 and 26, which are served at these two locations all the time. It's great. Encourage everyone to do so. But I don't, but I think the reality of BRT service, that you would need to support that kind of intensity development, it's not going to happen. So I think we should probably look, take a look at this policy and maybe have a smaller floor area ratio and smaller dwelling units per acre. But I think with what we have proposed today is compatible. I agree with the findings that staff has made, and I think these conditions of approval will help meet this major deviation request. Thank you.
Comments? I will entertain a motion, please. Feel free.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion. Dr. Champagne, he was a longtime member of this commission, and it's a Sparks Dr. Champagne, he was a longtime member of this commission, and it's a Sparks business. I'd make a motion that we, let me get back to the motion here. I got excited. I move to approve the major deviation associated with PCN 170033, adopting findings MD1 through MD5 and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 6 listed in the staff report.
Motion. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And I'll move on to the PCN 170043, consideration and a possible action on a conditional use permit for a setback.
Chairman Peterson and planning commissioners, I'm Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. Before you today is a conditional use permit request to reduce the setbacks and the separation distance from a single-family residential unit for construction of a new 90-foot tall cellular tower and associated equipment enclosure. It's located on a site that's .16, .161 acres in size in the industrial zoning district located at 1935 Pacific Avenue. You can see on the vicinity map, this is the parcel here highlighted in cyan. The zoning code requires setbacks for cell towers to be 75% of the height of the cell tower and a minimum distance from single-family residential units of 200 feet or 300% the height of the tower, whichever is greater. With a 90-foot tower, the required setback is 67.5 feet from each property line and the setback or separation distance from residential is 270 feet. The applicant is requesting a setback of, from the front, it's 119 feet 11 inches. From the east side, it's 27 feet. From the west side, it's 22 feet 10 inches. And from the rear, it's 20 feet. This plot plan, it's a little hard to read, but you can see the numbers that they provided. The distance from the tower to the closest point on the residential is 98 feet 11 inches. The carrier for, the initial carrier on this cell tower will be Verizon. The 90-foot cell tower will be designed to accommodate two additional antenna carriers. This is the typical elevations. This is what anticipated to look like. The enclosure will be a 30 by 30 foot, 30 feet by 30 feet with a chain link fence surrounded, surrounding the equipment and cell tower. The subject property is designated industrial zoning, which lists public facilities, which includes telecommunication facilities, or as allowed uses. There are six findings with, for conditional use. In particular, for cell towers, there is an additional, under findy five, there's an additional sub findings, eight, eight sub findings relating to it. I'm good, I'll, in my presentation, I'll summarize the findings. The, the proposed cellular tower and associated equipment is a non-residential use in an existing industrial area. You can see on here, this is the parcel, all around here is industrial designation. This is community facilities. This is the city's corp yard or maintenance yard. By placing the cellular tower and equipment enclosure on the rear of the property, it allows future industrial uses on the remainder of the property. The project complies with goals MG1, policies MG2, and policies MG12, since the proposed project is a non-residential land use located within an industrial area. Subject property is in an area that has been utilized for industrial uses for decades and includes uses in the vicinity of the railroad yard, manufacturing, production, contractor's office and yard, and the small industrial businesses. The area has been transitioning from residential to industrial. The zoning code does not allow for residential uses any longer within the zoning, the industrial zoning district. There is an existing single-family unit located two lots to the east, which is this parcel here. And the single-family, at this point, the single-family dwelling unit would be considered a non-conforming or grandfathered use. This is the zoning map again. You can see purple represents the industrial designation and the, the green represents public facilities for the corp yard. The cellular tower and the equipment is a utility use appropriate in the industrial area. Though the cellular tower is a appropriate use in the industrial area, the site is too small to accommodate and comply with the required setbacks, also with the required separation between residential units. No new impact on the natural resources is anticipated, nor will the proposed cellular tower and associated equipment enclosure remove residential units from the city's inventory of housing. The proposed equipment enclosure is not manned and will be revisited on a limited basis. The proposed cell tower is located outside of the 1,500-foot buffer required for any tower over 75 feet. On this exhibit, you can see this is approximately where the location is. So it's without, beyond the boundary. These terracotta circles represent 1,500 square, distance radius from the cell tower that these are, 750, the orange ones. The subject site is located underneath the approach surface of the Reno-Tahoe International Airport. The applicant has already received a determination of no hazard to air navigation from the Federal Aviation Administration or the FAA. The determination includes the tower and the construction equipment, of which neither shall exceed the overall heights as indicated by the FAA's determination. As discussed earlier, there is a non-conforming or a grandfathered single-family residential in the immediate vicinity, two parcels over, which would be this parcel. In between this parcel is an existing billboard, or as they're known by our zone, non-conforming outdoor advertising structure. Based on the proposed cellular tower height of 90 feet, the zoning code requires a 270-foot separation from the single-family resident, and it's proposed to be approximately 99 feet. Construction of the cellular tower will require a building permit viewed by the city's building permission. The cellular tower must be structurally designed to ensure it will not fail. With the risk of failure mitigated through the structural engineering, the risk to the surrounding areas minimized. To date, as a side comment, no cellular towers have failed structurally within the City of Sparks. The proposed cellular tower will be located on an existing industrial area adjacent to the railroad tracks, next to an existing non-conforming outdoor advertising structure or billboard, which is about the same height as the proposed cellular tower. And other uses in the area are production facility, the city's maintenance yard. Staff views a cellular tower and its associated equipment as compatible with these uses. In the industrial district, the landscaping requirement is 10 feet along the street frontage. The cell tower will be located in an area of industrial uses with relatively little landscaping and, 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 and. Requiring landscaping on the site does not make sense until there is full development of this site. There is an existing tree along Pacific Avenue. The proposed conditional eight requires only the maintenance of the existing tree, enhancement of the street frontage, non-vegetative landscaping. The other cell towers in the vicinity are not stealthed, and for these reasons, staff is not recommending a conditional requiring the stealth design for the cell tower. Attached to the staff report are three photo simulations provided by the applicant of the existing and proposed conditions. Each one of them, the top is the existing, this one is a view from Pacific Avenue looking southeast to the site. This one you can see without the cell tower, and here is the cell tower. The second photo simulation is from 21st, South 21st Street looking northeast to the site. Again, this is what the cell tower would look like. The last photo simulation that was provided, this is actually from Victorian looking south towards the property across the tracks. The applicant conducted an analysis of the selection of the, of the location for the cell tower to serve Verizon. The applicant used a search radius of approximately a half mile to a mile and located potential sites of which none set, met the site locational objectives. As a result, the only feasible location is the proposed site in this application. In my staff report, in the background section, it goes into more in-depth on that, the, their analysis of this area. Neighborhood notices were sent out to 61 property owners. To date, staff has not received any public comment. Newspaper was published, the newspaper notice was published in the Reno Gazette-Journal on August 25th. Staff is recommending an approval of, with 10 conditions. In discussions with the applicant, staff is recommending tonight a change in the wording to condition eight. The applicant is asking, since they are on a lease to this property, they're asking that the landscape conditions be tied to the property owner. So that what we're proposing in rewording is the existing vegetation along Pacific Avenue shall be maintained in a healthy condition by the property owner. At time of submittal, the property owner shall submit a landscape, landscaping plan showing non-vegetative landscaping along Pacific Avenue for review and approval by the district prior to the issuance of any permits. The non-vegetative landscaping approvals must be installed prior to the final certificate approval for the building permit for the cellular installation. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Karen, why aren't we recommending a stealth design on this, this tower?
Because none of the towers in the area are stealth, and it's staff's opinion that by steffing it, I think will make it stand out more than by just having the standard design in the industrial area.
Stealth, when we're talking stealth, does that like make, turn it into a tree or something?
Yeah, a pine tree, which there aren't any in that area, so we'd make it really stand out, I think. Yeah. And you're next to the railroad tracks. I mean, you've got the, so, that's what the staff opinions, if planning commission has different opinions.
Stealth ones you see around the area are the pine trees and crosses and.
Yes. Or a lot of them are what they call ray domes. If you see that fat, the thick flagpole, that's another one. But this is also taller than most of those towers. This is 90 feet as opposed to, a lot of those are in this 75-foot range. So a thick flagpole at 90 feet, I think, would stand out more than just letting it be a normal tower.
Karen, in the past, when we've had these, it's mainly the noise of the generators that kick up and, you know, a lot of the surrounding neighbors, for the generator noise, but with the railroad tracks and the interstate being right there, that would probably be mitigated.
Yeah, and they only run the generator on, well, when the crew will come out and check on it, they'll, they'll make sure the generator's working, but it's only operated on an extended period if there was an emergency, because they've got to keep the towers going. And applicant's here, he can probably address those specific questions.
Okay. Karen, you did say that this was going to have to be a building permit. Do our building codes state that, you know, cover that tower that high?
Yes, yes.
Applicant here, would you like to address this?
Thank you for hearing this today. We appreciate it, and we want to thank the staff as well for their hard work in putting this together and bringing it before you. That said, my name is Baz Lynn. I'm with Epic Wireless, and we are the representative for Verizon Wireless who would be constructing the tower. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'll open it up.
Did you look into any co-location of other existing towers for, why this location?
We, we.
I understood it was quite the process to get here.
There was, it was definitely a process involved, but to make a long story short, the locations which we could co-locate on were actually on City of Sparks property, and we were directed early on, well, fairly early on in the process, that that property would not be available for us. And so we turned our attention to numerous others, including the Sparks Maintenance Yard. And again, were advised after we had started some negotiations with the City of Sparks that those wouldn't, that that site would no longer be possible and available. So we had to begin seeking other alternatives, and there were none, which is why we're here before you for the site.
Why that location? Who are you trying to service in that area? Are you getting complaints of no coverage?
No, it isn't a matter of coverage any longer. A lot of these sites are now driven by the need for data transmission. For instance, if you have a large file or you're in the middle of a video conference or something like that, a lot of that work is now done remotely. And it isn't just a matter of being able to cover, it's also having capacity to service the existing customers within the area and having capacity issues with the surrounding cell sites that are no longer able to handle the traffic. We do what's called a handoff. And so in order to, when a site gets too loaded with data traffic, not just voice, I mean, it's all the same thing anymore, it's all digital. But when a site gets too loaded with existing traffic, and it is all data, it needs to find an escape route or an alternative to be able to make a handoff from the device to another tower to be able to accommodate that traffic and data transmission. Thank you, appreciate the time. Thanks again.
Public hearing item, I'd take, anybody in the public would like to address this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion or possible motion.
I move to approve the conditional use permit associated with PCN 17-0043, adopting findings S1 through S6 and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 10 as listed in the staff report.
And please note that amended wording for conditioning.
Amended wording.
A motion.
Second.
And a second? All in favor?
We have discussion, point of order.
Yes, we may have a discussion.
Thank you, I just, discussion usually follows a second. I just wanted to put out there, I'm a little concerned about the visual impact of this, of this tower. 103,000 cars pass by it every, every day, but I'm going to go with staff's recommendation on this one, I think. Don't want to draw attention to it. Just want to get that on the record. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The other comment?
Karen, we talked about the change in condition of approval where the landscaping become the site owner's responsibility versus the applicant's. And I wanted to talk about the condition of use.
Yes.
And so even though Verizon technically the applicant, this conditional use permit not finding out or running the land and it belonged technically to the owners.
That's correct, but the applicant asked for it to be property owner just because, to make Verizon more comfortable with the wording of the condition.
I appreciate that. I, what I'm trying to impress upon the commission is that the, is that the conditional use permit does not run to Verizon, although they apparently have an agreement with, with the site owner. And so if the deal with. And so if the deal with Verizon falls through, it would be accurate to say that another service provider could erect a cellular tower on this location without coming back before the commission, is that correct?
That's correct, they would have to comply with the conditions that you have approved tonight, but a different carrier could take over the site.
Thank you for clearing it up. So we still have a motion, a second now, we'll, all entertain a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll move on to general business, PCN 17-0038.
Good evening, Chairman Peterson and Planning Commission. Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. Before you tonight is a request for approval of Phase 8 Final Development Plan Handbook for Kylie Ranch North. Property, the Phase 8 Handbook consists of a site of approximately 34 acres in size in the new urban district for Kylie Ranch North zoning. Generally located east of David Allen Parkway, north of Windmill Farms, and west of Kylie Ranch Parkway. This is the property here highlighted and surrounded by cyan. The proposed Kylie Ranch North Phase Handbook consists of 33.87 acres. There are, there have been six final plan development handbooks approved and recorded for the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development. The Phase 8 Plan Development Handbook establishes development standards for business park, multifamily, single-family, which is allowed in the multifamily district, and also open space uses. It also has applied to it an overlay designation for schools to allow elementary and middle, or just schools in general, over both villages 17 and 18. The Phase 8 Final Handbook does not include development plans, and any of the land uses provided in the Final Handbook may be developed within, in compliance with the development standards within the handbook. When the final development plans are submitted, the plan will be reviewed against the standards within the handbook and in conjunction with Section 1.5, which is for individual project approval process, which is in the Final Handbook. Both Sparks Municipal Code and Nevada Revised Statutes specify the review process for the final approval of a planned development handbook. Staff has compared the Phase 8 development standards with those that are in the approved tentative handbook for Kylie Ranch North, and determined that the development standards in the Kylie Ranch North Phase 8 are identical to the development standards within the tentative handbook. There are five criteria to determine the compliance with the handbook. Here is the overall. Faster, our land use map for Kylie. The purple represents business park, the, the yellow color is a. The Phase 8 Final Kylie Ranch North Development Stand Handbook does not vary the proposed gross residential density or intensity from the Kylie Ranch tentative handbook. The medium high-density residential designation has a medium density of 17.9 units per acre for either single-family or multifamily housing. The Phase 8 Handbook does not propose any changes to that maximum density. The Handbook does not vary the proposed ratio of residential to non-residential. The Phase 8 Handbook has 14.71 acres of business park and 19.178, 16 acres of the MHR, which are the same acreages as seen on this map in the tentative handbook. It does not reduce the common open space. The Phase 8 Handbook has 1.13 acres of open space in the form of the Orditch linear trail. You see this green, that's the open space within the handbook. There is no increase to the floor area proposed for the non-residential use from the approved tentative handbook. The Phase 8 Handbook does not propose any increases in the floor area of the non-residential uses. Even if both villages are developed as schools, the overlay, school overlay is an approved overlay in the tentative handbook, as represented on this map before you. The handbook, the Phase 8 Handbook does not increase the total ground area covered by buildings, nor is there substantial changes in the height of the buildings. The Phase 8 Handbook does not propose any changes to the development standards. The final development plans will be reviewed in conformance with the handbook. Based on the five substantial compliance criteria listed in Sparks Municipal Code and Nevada Revised Statutes, staff believes that the final plan development handbook for the Kylie Ranch Phase 8 is in substantial compliance with the tentative handbook as approved by the city council. Staff recommends that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council as the final plan development handbook for Phase 8 of Kylie Ranch North is in substantial compliance with the tentative Kylie Ranch North Plan Development Handbook. This concludes my presentation.
Questions from the commissioners?
Karen, what would happen to the 14 acres of business park land use if there were to be a school built on it? Would that transfer to another village within the Kylie North?
The tentative handbook does not address transfer of commercial or business park land uses. It does transfer residential density, so the MHR parcel, those densities could be transferred to another parcel.
Not necessarily the.
The business park, no, but there are other phases of the handbook in that where we would be looking at potentially that with additional, a new phase.
Wouldn't necessarily lose that land use from our master plan.
At this point, it's undetermined.
Been here?
My name is Lois Brown, and I work for KM2 Development, who are planning and producing the Kylie Ranch North project. I did notice, I want to thank Karen, she's like a dictionary of the Kylie Ranch. She's been with us for, through two tentative handbooks, and this is our seventh handbook. We have another one coming next month for application. I think there's one typo in the, the title of the application. When they typed it up, it says zoning district generally relocated east of David Orr, and it's actually David Allen. And so maybe we could correct that in the motion. We have been developing the Kylie Ranch since 2011. There's quite a backbone of streets and infrastructure in there now. We're just getting started with the first housing product coming to the south next to what's going to be a neighborhood park in the corner. And we've been working very closely with the school district to develop this handbook so that they can go forward. They're planning both a middle school now, and eventually an elementary school, which is why they're wishing to purchase both pieces now. So I would be happy to answer any questions. Oh, Mr. Carey? There is a mechanism in the handbooks that allows to move around residential density, basically through the tentative handbook revision process. And that same idea could be applied to business parks. It would come through an amendment to the tentative handbook, which overlays the entire property. And I think the business park designations will be very much ruled by what clients come in and wish to be there. But I think with over 4,000 dwelling units and a middle school and an elementary, it will be a popular commercial and business site. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Lois, how are you? Can you just give us a quick update on how Kylie Ranch Development's going? You say you just started some single-family homes down at the south end. I know it's really not part of this, but if you could just.
And these three villages in this area, we sold about 126 acres to Lewis people, and they created over 120 acres, and they. Small, large, and larger lots of these, about 10, 12, 13, 14. The larger lots appear to be along eastern boundary here, because next to it, as you know, is this large wildlife development, and the regional trail system plan around and throughout the development runs right along there and ties into the north and the south regional trail systems. We have sold this piece of property to Renown, and they have a final handbook that talks about a medical campus, which could have a broad range of uses from a hospital down to doctor's offices, assisted living. And along Pyramid, we have quite a bit of area for arterial commercial, which could be gas stations, convenience stores, retail. You will see coming, oh, this area down here is called Phase 1, and that was developed before we arrived, and that's all mapped, and you see new houses going up on it now. This area in the master, in the, what am I trying to say? In your master plan for the city, this area, which was designated school, has now been designated high-density residential, so you'll probably see quite a pod of high-density residential here. Our thinking is with the schools sitting right in the middle, it may be appropriate to come and ask for an amendment to the tentative handbook, because it kind of changes the character between the residential side and the commercial side, and we want to take a hard look at that. This, this blue one right here? Is designated school. It has a land use designation as school right now, but it needs to be changed because both the city and the school district agreed that they liked this location much better.
With that being a attractive location for business park?
I think, well, well, my personal opinion. And of course, we do all of our amendments with the staff. This area is, is all what's designated for business, and I think we'll all come together. That this areas would become more isolated, but really it depends on what clients present themselves.
Thank you.
Questions?
I'd like to have Mr. Martini come down and explain basically the thinking behind why moving the school site is logical and something that we find beneficial to the build-out of this development.
Welcome.
Chair members of the commission, John Martini, our Community Services Director. As Counselor Thornley pointed out, we have long struggled with school locations. I think all of us living in the community have seen the effects of putting schools on arterials. With those schools comes school zones, so the purpose of our arterial roadways are to move all of us through our daily needs efficiently through the city to other arterials so we can all get to work, you know, get back home. A case in point, Vista Boulevard in the morning in front of Mendive, where we have the down school zone, where we take speeds from 40 miles an hour down to 20 and 15. You can see the effects every day if you, if you drive that arterial on your way to work, or, or wherever you're going. They start to choke the capacity of arterials down, so. Thankful to the Kylie North folks, we started discussions with them early. As you guys can all see in the, in the land use map, that original school was planned to be on what right now is called Lazy 5 Parkway, that name's going to change as soon as we connect it through. It's going to become Hills Drive all the way to Pyramid, and then likely Lazy 5 going up the hill to Sonoma Highlands. So we started, we actually started talking with them. Additionally, when indications came from the school district that they had a greater need for acreage, that they were talking about both a middle school and a elementary school, it gave us a really good reason to start looking at moving, moving the school off the arterial and kind of into the heart of, which is a nice divide in this planned unit development between the residential section and the other uses being business park and commercial. And, and I think the KM2 Kylie folks saw it pretty quickly. Though, you know, that much acreage up in that corner was going to get awkward. We did not want it on the arterial for various reasons, and, and I think a really good plan came together that met all of our needs, and I think it's going to enhance and really get Kylie North to where we'll all be extraordinarily proud of it. I think, I think we're, this commission and us as staff are now starting to see a dream that started 2004, you know, starting to, to get roots, and, you know, the addition of the Lewis folks building the homes, or developing to then sell the home builders is a good start. We're looking forward to the business park, we're hoping we'll get some interest. I agree with, with Lois that as we add rooftops, you'll see other uses come into Kylie, which has a great variety of land uses included in it. And I think the school, both schools located in the heart of the development is going to be real key to that happening. How long it will take? Well, if you listen to our colleagues at the school district, they'd like to have a building permit tomorrow.
They have, they have financial problems.
I was going to say, 2019, it, we will blink and that school will be up and running.
And we're all concerned about the school.
They've got that bonding though, so we're going to build.
It's long overdue and much needed in our community, and we're looking forward to it happening.
Thank you for that input. Thank you all. Any further comments? I'll bring it back to the commission for a motion and a discussion, please.
Make a motion, Mr. Chair. I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council. PCN 17-0038 is the final handbook for Phase 8 of the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development. Is in substantial compliance with the tentative Kylie Ranch North Plan Development Handbook, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, with the correction of the street being from Orr Parkway to David Allen.
Motion second on a discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, public comment, again? Seeing none, public comment? Any comments from the commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask when the next planning commission, Sparks Planning Commission date is?
The next meeting of the planning commission will be the first Thursday in October.
We don't have one on the 21st?
We might have one on the 21st.
Chair's going to be out of town, he's going to leave on the 21st.
That's why we're not, that's why we're not having one.
We threw discussing this garbage.
An announcement and a comment, if I may. I wanted to put an announcement out there for the public and the commission that next Thursday here in this room, there will be a meeting for the Reno Spaghetti Bowl project. NDOT's going to be coming in and showing some of the preliminary designs for what they have planned for the future spaghetti bowl. It's going to be next Thursday, that's September 14th, from 4 to 7 here in, in the chambers. I'd encourage the commissioners and the public to go and check out what, what they're doing. Some really interesting things planned, especially. out what, what they're doing. Some really interesting things planned, especially in front of the Nugget, which could really impact Sparks. But if you can't make the meeting or looking for more info, the website is nspaghettibowl.com, nspaghettibowl.com, that's all one word. And then, from a, from a comment, I would just like to make, getting back to the deviation, I would suggest that maybe staff take a look into revising, the noticing for deviations, and putting in there the specific requested percentage of the deviation that they're requesting. Tonight's item was, was fifty percent. I think that the public has a right to know that. If, you know, what I was reading through our state planning guide that we got last, last month, you know, and reading about the importance of our code, and this and that, I think if, if someone's proposing to waive, through the, through our major deviation process, any portion of the code, you know, we have, and the code allows us ten to fifty percent, I think that the public has a right to know what our percentage of the code that we're, we're waiving. For this instance, it was floor area ratio. I know earlier this year, we had that reduced setback over here on Fifth Street for that dwelling unit. That was another fifty percent. I just think it would help the, the public to understand if we have the specific percentage of the deviation of this, of the code that they're, that they're requesting. I think it would help with that. I, I got the notice. I was talking to some of my neighbors. They were confused. Floor area ratio is a very technical term, but I think it would have been helpful for them to, to see what the specific requested percentage of the code that they're, they're requesting. Just a comment. Thank you.
I have one comment. I just wanted to thank my fellow commissioners for the warm welcome that they've given me on recently joining the commission, and I had the opportunity to visit with staff, and I really appreciate their time and helping getting me oriented, and especially Marla Lee, for, Marla Lee for dropping off materials at my home personally. I appreciate that, and I know you guys- I know you guys work really hard, and I want to thank you for your hard work and effort, so I appreciate that.
We thank you, and thank for being baptized. Your first motion today.
Well done.
Any further comments? If not seen any of business, we'll re-